All right, so I start that over then. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to orientation session for the Eastern City Council. This gives us a time as a council to go through the agenda and ask any questions that's on the agenda for tonight's meeting. Also, to, if this body pleases, to go into closed session during this time, we can do that as well. Um, so let's just jump right into it as it relates to the agenda. Is there any questions from this body? On? For anything that's on the agenda for tonight?
Uh, I have one, uh, let's see, trying to find my agenda. I got it here. Uh, under the first reading, the tax amendment for the city's zoning ordinance pertaining to provisions of emergency shelters. Could someone split, please speak on that?
Yes, Caitlin Hines is on there. We can, Caitlin, if you can jump in there.
Hi.
Hi, how are you doing Caitlin?
I'm great, how are you? Okay, so, um, basically, we were approached by someone who wants to put in an emergency shelter, and we had a definition, but we didn't have a location, um, in our schedule of, um, land uses, I guess. So, we are just adding this as a special land use so that they can go through, they have a process to follow. Instead of trying to fit it into some other land use.
Okay, so, my question would be in residential areas, if this body decides to go with this?
Mm-hmm. These, so these are the, um, these residential areas are the, like, multiple-family residential.
Okay, so can you explain multiple-family residential for those audience that's out there that may be listening to this?
Okay, yeah, so, um, multiple-family residential is a, um, it's more dense residential. So, this is like duplexes and, um, basically, I'm trying to think of words, sorry. Um, just, yeah, so basically like duplexes and more dense residential areas. It's not single-family homes. RM and RM1, RM1 is where we have all of our apartment housing. Um, so the RM is just smaller scale than that.
Okay, so when you say, um, the M1, so it's, it's like where we have apartments at? Is that what you're saying?
No, RM1.
RM1.
M1 is, um, industrial. We wouldn't want to put anyone in an industrial area.
Okay. Could you give us like, uh, because it's a lot of people probably watching this. Can you give me like an area, uh, street where this could possibly be located?
Um, sure, hold on.
My zoning map, I mean, I don't have a zoning map in front of me.
Hold on one sec, let me pull up a zoning map and I can show, I can tell you. Sorry for the background noise, I have an infant, so she's very awake right now.
That's okay.
And my husband just walked in, so. Hold on, let's see.
Mayor Protim Howard.
Yes.
While she's looking for that, I had actually sent a, pick up the hyperlink from the city's website to a business owner earlier for this zoning map. I can send that to you as well via email real quick, if that'll help. I don't know if it's the most updated one, but just to give you an idea.
I can look at it later, okay, thank you.
All right, so the main areas will probably be, well, just flipped around. Hold on. It'll probably be, um, you're looking at, let me see what road this is. Um, I guess like Cherry Avenue, I think Harrison is considered our, RM1.
Okay.
Um, Carlisle has some RM1. Not RM1, RM, but, um, yeah. There's, there's, there's quite a bit. It's not a small area, but it's not one of our, like, it's not like R1B where it's just single-family residential and it's everywhere. It, it's along major streets.
Okay, um, now here's, uh, the concerns that, uh, some of my, which had said, asked me, uh, in, in this, in this ordinance, they can stay to, up to a week?
Yes.
Okay, okay, now you do know we do have an emergency shelter that's at the rec center, uh, only when the temperatures get down to, I'm not sure what temperature it has to be, but once it get below freezing, I do, at the things to open up the rec center for people to spend the night, and then have to leave. Um, I'm not sure if we're still doing that or not, Mayor?
Yes, we are.
Okay, okay. Okay, that's all my questions, thank you Caitlin.
Yep, no problem.
Any other questions from this body on tonight's agendas?
Is there, um, through the mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Through the mayor, um, where this, um, new zoning is concerned, I see they only have a 1,000-foot buffer between, uh, edifices of this nature. Uh, can they raise that, like maybe three to five? And then that'll mean less in certain areas? Is that something that we can do at this point? Suggest the 3,000 to 5,000-foot buffer between things of this nature? Because I don't think they're talking, when they say emergency shelters, this is not necessarily referring to people who are homeless. This is anybody who is in an emergency that may need shelter, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So how do we go about doing that? Or suggest that be part of the?
We can, um, we can change the buffer. I would recommend not going up to 5,000 because that would limit you, that would be basically one in the entire city, but, um, and I don't know, I mean, if you want to do that, we could look into that, but I think the 1,000-foot buffer pretty much already limits it a lot. If you look at where the RM1 or the RM is and the RM1, most of the RM1 is already built out as apartments, and then you only are left with the RM, and that is, um, it's not a lot of area. So, I mean, if we expand it a lot, I mean, we might be able to get one or two in, but, um, if you want to look into like a 3,000-foot or 2,000-foot, I think it would be okay.
That, that's exactly what I'm looking into because we're being inundated by a bunch of different types of housing for other than residential. Or people who want to come in and do whatever, other than, you know, foster homes, this home, that home, that all.
Right.
The more area that we eliminate, because obviously, even though the state created this problem by closing a lot of the facilities that were open for these people, they are requiring the cities now to make amends for their sins. And we just don't have that type of room or that type of, uh, incomes or those types of things. So we have to find some way to restrict certain areas without, you know, creating some sort of legal problem. And the only way I can see we can do that is through having sections where they're supposedly at. So I'd like to see that be part of this, uh, this situation. Also, the, the stipulations you made about being, uh, 24 hours a day, that they had to be, um, governed by some specific, where is it? By a, um, by a, by, uh, incorporated by the state and which is not a nonprofit. Can you explain that?
Hold on.
They must be, they must be operated by a recognized human service agency incorporated by the state and which is not, which is not for profit, so.
Right, we're limiting it to nonprofits running this.
Okay, what, 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 uh, service agency and what incorporated by the state exactly? Does that mean, what obligation does do those two entities have?
Sorry, can I get back to you with this one? This is a good question, I just want to make sure I have a good answer for you.
Yeah, wanted to get back to you. Thank you.
Yep.
Yes, this is on the agenda for tonight for the first reading. The applicant may be on tonight. And I know that a person, as a matter of fact, Caitlin, why don't you see if they'll be on tonight? That way they can speak to that. That's a very good question. But I know that they do. Go ahead.
Why would this thing would drop on the agenda until it says time to get all information?
No, we don't do that. This came from planning commission as a recommendation for us to do. So, we want to get the applicant on the line to answer the questions that they have for the council so we can move this item four. This is something that was presented to us by the county.
Oh, so it was presented to you by the county? So, is, is no one, does anyone else have a question? Because I have another question, but I know I have to yield until everyone else has, uh, answered the question.
Councilwoman Wiley, where you done?
Uh, sure.
Okay. Reverend Williams, where you done?
Councilman Williams? Yeah, yeah.
Anyone else want to go before Mayor Protim jumps in again? Okay, Mayor Protim, go ahead.
When she was, uh, when, uh, Councilwoman Wiley was talking about buffering, uh, you know, two or 5,000 feet, why only can we just limit it to have one in? That way it can be, my concern is if have it and it's only 1,000 feet, uh, apart, I'm having concerns about, uh, people walking up and down the street, and how would this affect the runs on the police that is already now going, you know, going to house to house, uh, as far as the runs as far as farms? So how would that help us?
Yeah, I don't think that this is, this is similar, I don't know if you're familiar with Mayor Protim, um, at the K Beard building, right at Henry Russ and Michigan Avenue? It's similar to that. It's actually, it's actually that. Um, the K Beard building, that function is, um, they were moving, the county was actually moving that function into another community. And I was approached to ask if it was something that we would, you know, possibly entertain. So, this was like the first step for us to even be considered to do something like that. But, um, from my understanding, it's only for families. Families will only be able to stay in, in this particular facility.
Okay, families? So do that, is the building in question that they're looking at? Or is it, is it a resident they're looking at?
No, they're gonna build, it's a $5 million project. They're gonna build it from the ground up.
And where is it gonna be central located?
We don't know right now, we have to, we had, so, so like Caitlin was explaining before, the actual, um, language, language was on the books, but for whatever reason, we never zoned it as a city. So that's what we're doing now, to figure out where it could possibly be.
Okay, okay. Because the facility that's where it's at right now is almost like a perfect facility because there's no residents around, and you just have traffic coming down, you know, Michigan Avenue. But I would like it to be in an area somewhere like that where, uh, where these people who have to come in would not be conflicted with residents who have homeowners, homeowner residents, uh, something in that nature. So that's where, uh, and I think I would, I would want to, if we do put this on the books, I will only want one. I don't, because we only two, we 6.2 square miles. I only want one.
I think that's where the buffering comes in, that just to keep us, to keep us out of any litigation. And I'm not an attorney, but I'm just listening to the jargon and understanding that the natural zoning is gonna be our best bet. So what Councilwoman Wiley suggested earlier, I think that's what we go with. So if it's 5,000 feet, that would be a mile within each other, so.
Right. But we still need to think, even though there's a mile within each other, we six square miles, so it can be one at every mile. I'm trying to eliminate it to one. So how can we do that?
That's a good question, but I know that it's only in the RM, is it the RM1 Caitlin?
Sorry, my phone was freaking out. Um, it's the RM and the RM1. But like I said before, the RM1 is completely built out. And the RM, it's a limit, you're, you're limiting it because of the sizes of the lots already as well. So, um, the only, the best way to limit this is by square feet apart. Um, and we can look at perhaps upping it to 2,000, but if you apply any type of buffer to that and look at how big 1,000 square feet is, it's actually very large. Um, and I can provide that for you between this meeting and, uh, the next meeting, if you would like, for the second reading.
And I would actually like to, I'm sorry, Ms., Mr. Mayor, I would actually like to take a look at the, uh, have the council go and take a look at, uh, the area before, you know, before, you know, before our second reading on this. Because I would like to see, because I just don't want us to be to more than one, because we only 6.2 square miles.
And I don't want to put the cart before the horse, but, um, the area that we're looking at is where the, in between where the old Blanchett used to be, well, Farrah, and where the Veterans Center is, so in that area.
The Veterans Center that's on Middle Belt?
Yeah, Middle Belt and Carlisle. In that area. Beach, Northland, around Northland area.
Okay, I yield.
I have two questions, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, if, um, Ms. Hines, because I, I often forget back and forth between all these and different circumstances, but with those buffers, which is the footage in between, is that door-to-door or is that entity-to-entity like the edge of the property line? Or she could elaborate on that?
Um, we've been interpreting it as door-to-door.
Door-to-door, okay. And then just my second question, I guess for the administration. I know you talked about, um, these entities or emergency shelters being ran by nonprofits. And I forgot to ask at the planning commission meeting, and I, and I think we may have discussed it, but I forgot, uh, would we be getting any type of tax base off of this?
Yeah, that was the one thing that, you know, when they even approached me about it, you know, seeing that it was a nonprofit. So, we're looking at a payment in lieu of taxes on the actual build of the property itself. Um, the SEV of the property, the build out should be around 5 million, so looking at a payment in lieu of taxes, I don't know what that'll balance out to. But, uh, once we get off into it, if that's something that this body, um, would want to even entertain, then we would have those numbers before us.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Now, I know that, uh, there's a couple of things that we need to add to the agenda. City Clerk actually sent out an email earlier today about a grant that we needed to accept. A good work on that, City Clerk. Want to talk about that a little bit?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this was actually, um, a grant opportunity that was presented to us by the Michigan Bureau of Elections. And so I applied for the grant because it helps with, um, funding for the polling locations for elections, for PPE, um, ba- basically being able to pay our election inspectors hazard pay. Uh, we're gonna order some additional laptops for electronic poll books. Um, and the, the grant is a non-matching, um, grant. And so, um, the award was for $50,000. And so we're also gonna buy a new tabulator, um, so that we can add an additional count board. Um, so those are, those are things that I'm planning on doing with the, uh, grant money.
Okay, any questions about that?
Yes.
And Councilman Chisholm?
Just because that's great news. And often, if, hmm, the majority of our people don't watch these meetings via the public access channel or any other resource, when news like that comes across, is it possible we can develop a method to put out via social media stuff to just to give kudos to the clerk's office or whoever? So people know that we're bringing some type of monies in to assist with things and that we not just spending everything, just to kind of get the word out. Because for instance, on the city of Westland, we probably get some type of electronic newsletter from them daily. And so, at the state level. So you always know about somebody being promoted, um, a new hire or something of that sort. The community is on that particular, uh, I guess, email chain of stuff as they build it, and that's how they continue getting the word out. Because I know, we got an email, but if we don't have a conglomerate of people in our own emails to send it out to, and like I said, if they're not tuning in here, they don't even know that we just got, that we're about to vote for a grant.
Yeah, we have been looking, and that's a good, that's a good, a good point. But we have been looking at a method that wouldn't necessarily cost the city, um, money to send out a mass newsletter, kind of like what you're talking about, um, electronically. But at the same time, we know a C-click fix, you can actually sign up and get notices, things of that nature. So, that's something that we probably need to promote more of and, and do it that way. That with the C-click fix, which we already have on our website. If you register there, you will get, uh, the meetings, updates and all of that stuff, and we can put all that good news into there. And then as we start to really build our database, you know, it'll catch you on. So I, I, I agree with you 100%. And we'll put it out on all of our social media stuff as well. Troy's been doing a really good job of that type of stuff, so we'll make sure that we get that. You're welcome. So, um, we want to add that to the agenda as, uh, under new business as item B. Right, City Clerk?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay.
Congratulations Felicia on that.
Thank you, Mayor Protim Howard.
All right, good job. All right, then also to just roll it in, keep it on with some more good news. Darren, CEO on the line, um, as it relates to the hazard pay that we received for the bonuses for our first responders.
Yes. Yeah, so, um, what the mayor's referring to is that there is a, um, a bonus payment that the state of Michigan has been providing or is in the process of providing to communities across the state. Uh, this payment is from funding that the state received through the Federal Cares Act. So that, that was the Coronavirus Relief Act that was passed at the federal level. The state got, um, several billion dollars in money, and they've been distributing that money in various ways to, um, help localities, defer some of the costs incurred, um, related to the coronavirus. Um, so, one of the things is that they provided a, a put-together program for a bonus payment for frontline responders, uh, and it's referred to as kind of a hazard pay premium. Um, you know, so the program was rolled out about, about, uh, six to eight weeks ago. The city applied for the funding, we just got notification that we will be receiving the funding, we haven't received it yet. Um, but just because of the timing, it's a little bit different. We didn't, um, you know, apply through the normal process, it's a very condensed timeline. And so, part of the program, we have to distribute the money by November 30th. Um, the money's gonna go to public safety, uh, officers and police and fire, a $1,000, a one-time payment. And we, we need to make it, uh, this coming payroll, uh, our last payroll for September is this Friday. So we need to go ahead and make that payment. Um, we'll, we'll formally introduce it to council via the budget amendment, which is wanted to let you know, um, you know, that this program is, has been, um, you know, we applied for it, which we had discussed before, but we have gotten a formal notification that the money, uh, application was, was, um, has been processed and that the money will be forthcoming. Um, and so it's really just a pass-through, we get the money from the state, we'll be passing it along to the, uh, you know, eligible employees. And right now, there's no action for council to take when we come with the first budget amendment, we'll include that. Um, and it'll just be recognizing the revenue on the, um, the grant on the revenue side and the expense that'll be going out. Uh, but again, we'll be doing that this week, and we just wanted to make sure council was aware of that.
Okay, so we don't need necessarily action?
No, um, you know, just from a timing standpoint, we'll just have it, um, included in the, uh, upcoming budget amendment, budget amendment number one. Um, you know, it'll be just part of the salary. So right now, there's the funding that is available, we'll just need to adjust the funding to account for that for the entire year of funding, so that these, um, payments can be included in the, um, you know, the total annual fiscal year budget.
Um, you're the mayor, what was the amount of the grant and how many, uh, employees will be receiving it?
We're, we're expecting about 60 employees, um, that, that'll be rece- 6-0, correct?
Okay.
Um, so it's about $60,000 that we'll be receiving. Each employee gets a thousand, oh, uh, $1,000 pay.
Okay, that was it. But is it, is it possible that I could ask the, the, um, Treasury something else that pertains to Treasury right now, or do you want me to wait and go on after he gets through?
No, excellent, actually.
Okay, I just want to know, I'm looking at the breakdown of the expenses for the attorney, and the numbers that they have don't amount to $34,000. It only amounts to $26,000, so is there some hidden figure I'm missing? Or do you?
I'm sorry, what, what numbers are you referring to, Councilwoman Wiley?
I'm referring to the, um, the breakdown of the fees and expenses by category for Allenbrook.
What, are you referring to a specific document or?
Yeah, yeah, it's the one he sends us every, every month where it says flat fee, blah, 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 municipal, blah, 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 labor, blah, 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 litigation.
Which, which, which date, which data, is this the most recent one?
The one in the current, um, package, 8/15.
Okay, I'm with you.
And it says 34,000, but the numbers only add up to 26,000 and something. So I just want to know, should we be looking somewhere else for the additional money?
Let me just, give me one second, let me pull that up, please.
Yeah, I just added up the numbers on that front page too, it came up to 26, 7.
I follow what you're saying, correct. Yeah, those, those, those are not, um, those aren't footing out. Uh, I don't have the, the detailed information for that.
I, I have. Uh, I got an email from our office manager when the invoice, when, when she sent the invoice out this week, she transposed two numbers. And if you just give me a few minutes, I'll find the email and explain to you what she transposed.
Okay.
I thought I forwarded you her email about a week ago. But she, she is right, it doesn't add up when you look at the cover sheet, but she just transposed the numbers.
And the detail.
Remember, uh, wildly.
Uh, we certainly don't want to give you more money than you earn, so.
I, I only want to take what we earn, trust me.
We on the same page.
All right, Councilwoman Wiley, did you have anything else?
No, that was it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yes.
Uh, I just want, no, just one, one question with the, uh, on page 41. For the action item, I just wanted to know, what, what was the account number for, for that action item? That's from the DPS director.
Yeah, that, um, I believe that's gonna be major, and I'm, I'm not sure Jerome is on, I believe that is coming out of, uh, we just went over that to this morning, I believe that is coming out of, uh, local streets. Um, let me pull that GL up, give me one second here.
Flashy.
Jerome was on the line and he said that's coming out of the roads fund.
Roads, is it, um, uh, local?
The local, yes.
Major streets, major street fund or local fund, street fund?
Local, local, all local roads.
Local.
Uh, and Jerome, is that 202, 471, um, 782? Road maintenance?
Yes.
Oh no, that's road, that's, that's road maintenance applies, Jerome. Sorry, I gave you the wrong one.
Okay.
Let's make sure we're doing the right one, which one is it Jerome, you know? You don't, let's just get the information and get back to us.
I'll be in my office in five minutes. I'll just pick me up suddenly, I didn't know he had on text. I'll be in my office in five minutes. Now get on to me.
All right, perfect. And Darren is actually looking forward now, so just get in contact with him.
Good, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
All right, Councilman, we're working on that.
Hey Darren, Mr. Mayor, can I, I, I found that. Just, just for clarification, if you look through, the cover sheet is wrong. She has the cover sheet for litigation is 17, 444. But if you add up all the litigation for the last 30 days, it actually came to 24, 694. So the total amount is correct. It's just that amount in the cover sheet is incorrect.
Okay, and I, I, uh,
If you total.
I've got, I've got the, 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 the detail from Veronica. I'm looking at the email Veronica sent out.
Yeah, so her cover sheet indicates litigation was 17,000.
Right.
Incorrect, it was for the month 24, 694.
Okay.
And, and the, the detail for the litigation is in the packet.
Okay, there's no cents on that 24, 694?
Yes, it's six, it's 24, 694 and 75 cents.
Thank you.
Okay.
Six nine four seven five. Okay. So we have a couple, one addition to the agenda for new business and item B, well, it'll be item B for the grant, acceptance of the grant for the clerk's office. Any other questions as it relates to the agenda? We're trying to, of course, um, much as we can get all the questions answered. Doing the reg, doing the orientation for the regular session can go smooth and timely. If you have any questions or comments, please, now is the time to make them. Buddy?
Mr. Mayor, the only thing, uh, was for the first reading. I would like to see whether or not we could condense that down to one building and how many applicants per building or however, you know, is it going to be floors or, um, is, how is it going to be? See, we don't have anything listed in here. It's just having an amendment.
And let me go back and say this, that again, the text amendment, we already have this as, it's already law for the city of Inxter. We just don't know where we're placing them. So that's what we're doing today, trying to figure out where we're going to place them. And then all those other discussions will come up because an applicant has to go through special land use through the planning commission and then of course through city council. So at the same time, all of those things that you want, we can still talk about that and put them in it. So this is the first reading, so we will have a second reading as well.
Okay. All right.
Yep, so we can just add, like you said, the, the 3,000 or 5,000, however, the buffers, you can add all of that language into it, one story, two story, however, this is the time to do that.
All right.
Okay, I, I heard somebody else, was anybody else saying?
Uh, that, that, that was, um, me, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to respond to Councilman Shaw. Um, he has a question regarding the general ledger account for that, um, that one agenda item. Um, and it is, uh, it is the road funds. It is being, um, uh, between local and major and the G, general ledger counter, those are funds 202 and fund 203, uh, local and major streets. And the general ledger account is 471, 939 dot 000, which is the, um,
471, 471?
939, 000. And that's the road repairs.
Okay, I'll see the road repair. So you got, you, you got about, uh, okay. We budget, we budget about 250,000 out of that road repair you talking about?
Correct.
Okay, all right, all right, I got you. Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, Attorney Jones, I know that, wanted to look at possibly going into closed session now. Look like we still have a little bit of time left. What are you thinking, what's your thoughts?
Okay, yeah, we, we can do that. We have one, two, four matters, uh, that we would need to go into closed session that we need a role call on. Those matters are the Bevins case, McGill case, the state of Crowder and the Blackwell litigation.
Do I hear motion to go into closed session?
Move.
There's support?
Support.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Mayor Paul Tim Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
And Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
Mayor, we have six yeas.
All right, motion carries, we want it in a closed session. Troy, Steve, yes, could you please get us set for that? And to the general public, we'll be back out. Hopefully we can start on time, seven o'clock. We'll see you then. Um, Trey, have you, all right, there we go. Uh, you know, I actually probably should say, start the live recording first. Um, we are live, uh, via our Facebook. Um, you can check us out at, uh, Inxter, Michigan, um, at Facebook, uh, Facebook Live. And, uh, we would like to call this meeting to order again of the Inxter City Council. Will you all rise with me and pledge allegiance to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we have Pastor Overman with us tonight. Troy, if you can chime her in to say a prayer for us before we begin.
Pastor Overman, you ready?
Father, we thank you this evening for your love and your grace. We thank you that you are the one who guard the city and that if anyone is watching, then they're watching in vain without you. We thank you for a spiritual awakening of the body of Christ in the city of Inxter. We thank you for the love of God that is shared abroad in our community and that the spirit of love will overtake us. Kindness and generosity will lead us. We thank you for the leadership and the authority in our community, our mayor, our council, all of the administrative staff, our police and fire chief, all of the nonprofits that work so hard in the community, the organizations. We thank you for everyone that has committed and put their hands to the work for the betterment of the city of Inxter. We ask that you continually bless our city, that you give us strategies, that you keep us hopeful, keep us loving what we do. We pray continuously for the welfare of our community and that the people that live here will turn to you, that we'll be a prosperous city, that we'll find peace in our borders and that as people come in and out of Inxter, they'll feel the love that we share for one another. We thank you that we'll continuously support righteousness and goodness. We'll be people that are just and fair. We'll thank you as we rejoice in the work that you've allowed us to do as we grow here, our children and their children. We'll continue to tell you thank you and we'll be a testimony to the communities around us as we live in such resilience, as we come back every time as a great community. We thank you for that. We ask that our community will begin to recognize how you love on us and how you show the city of Inxter such favor, even when things seem overwhelming. We see your hand in our lives and for that I thank you. For everyone under the sound of my voice, I decree and declare blessings in their homes and in their lives, in their relationships, that we will move forward and the power in Jesus's name, I pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you so much Pastor Overman. Roll call, please, City Clerk?
Mayor Wimberly?
Here.
Councilwoman Wiley?
Here.
Council, Councilwoman Washington?
Here.
Councilman Shaw?
Here.
Mayor Paul Tim Howard?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams? Councilman Williams?
Yeah.
Um, he's, I see him here. Um, Councilman Williams?
Yeah.
Okay, and Councilman Chisholm?
Here.
Mayor, we have seven present tonight, we have a core.
All right, moving right along. Uh, let's see here, close session, we've been there long enough. Approval of the agenda with the additions of, uh, item B and item C. What's your pleasure?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Support.
Been moved and properly supported. Uh, City Clerk, do we need to say what those items are for the general public?
Uh, when I get to the, when, when I get on the new business, I'll read them out.
All right, perfect, roll call, please.
Yes.
Question.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, before roll call, question, Councilman Shaw?
Question on the agenda, are we going to change that from the attorney fees? Uh, I think, uh, Councilwoman Wiley may have mentioned about that. Do we need to change that on the document or we just going to go ahead on and approve the agenda?
Make a note of it on the document for sure and for the rec, for the record. So changing that from 17 to 24, 694, 75 for litigation under page number eight for the breakdown of fees and expenses by category for the Allen Brothers instead of the 17, 444, making it a total of 3,402,025. I think that should satisfy the record. Roll call, please.
I'm sorry, um, Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Mayor Paul Tim Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yeah.
And Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Mayor, we have six yeas.
All right, motion carries, presentations, there are non-public hearings, consent agenda, consent agenda, please. What's your pleasure?
Some move.
What? Move to supportive roll call, please.
Councilmember Williams?
Yeah.
Mayor Paul Tim Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
We have six yeas, Mayor.
All right, motion carries, moving right along. Any boards and commissions?
Mr. Chair, I, I don't know if you got, you got the e, email. There's a young lady that wants to, I don't have it in front of me, but she wants to get on one of the boards and commission. Uh, Felicia, I don't know if you, if she sent that out to you?
Um, no, I haven't received that yet.
I think it was from, uh, Ms., Ms., uh, the, the, um, assistant in the mayor's office. From Mr. Wimberly.
You're talking about, uh?
Yeah, that was, right. And, um, there's some additional information that needs, uh, the application, the packet would need to be completed by her just to, um, so we can have the information that I need in terms of what boards and commissions she is interested in.
Yeah, and I, and I do apologize for that, Ms., uh, Madam Clerk. I just told her to, I just told Rhonda to send out the resume and she should have actually sent it to you first and then, uh, had you reach out to Ashley. But I know that she would be a great addition to a board and commission, so. Thank you, Councilman Shaw for bringing that up. Do we have any from the body?
I just have something to say in reference to that. The last several, um, ones we've gotten have not been accompanied by the actual application. And that contains a lot of the information that's needed too, like address, stuff like that. And they've all said they want to be on a board, they want to be on the board of commissions as if they want us to decide which one they should be on. They need to start specifying where they want to go or wherever their expertise lie.
I like that.
Yeah.
I think that's a question as the clerk is, is, is getting them the information and, and taking the information to make sure she acts on that.
And will the clerk be the central location where this comes from now?
Yes. She's al, she's always been that person and, and again, I said, like I said, I apologize as it relates to, Ashley, uh, had, uh, emailed me her resume and I forwarded it out to, uh, Rhonda, an extra to send it off to everybody. And it should have went to the clerk, like it's always been.
Okay, that was it.
Okay, any, any others as it relates to appointments, boards and commissions? Okay, so we will be making, uh, a couple of appointments to, uh, the housing board. I have some names that have come before us, um, as it relates to protocol for the housing board. Um, as it relates to the resident appointment, it has to be posted for a number of days. So we'll be making that point, that appointment the first of, uh, October. Um, working with the president and the members of the board of, for housing. We have, uh, identified a couple of individuals that, uh, we're looking at appointing to, um, a father clip in spot as he, as I vacated his spot for, uh, housing. So we will be bringing those before you, uh, in October. I'm also talking with the, uh, the president, um, uh, Chisholm, uh, Councilman Chisholm for the planning commission to, to get another person. I don't know, how many are, are in, do you know, Steve, how many we need for commission?
Uh, right now, we only have one vacancy and once that vacancy is filled, there were total nine commissioners on that board.
All right, good then. So we'll be working together to make sure that we get that appointment before you. Um, no later than the first of October, the first meeting in October as well. All right, uh, moving right along. We didn't have any other boards and commissions. All right, previous business?
Yes, Mayor, this is, um, a correction, I think, to the date. I think we gave the wrong date at the last city council meeting. So the previous business is a correction to table, a second reading to amend the city of Inxter Code of Ordinance, section 124, marijuana business license to October 19th, 2020, not October 12th, 2020.
The who, Mr. Chair?
There's support?
Support.
Any discussion on that? All right, hearing none, uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Wiley?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember, Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yeah.
Mayor Paul Tim Howard?
Yes.
Mayor Shaw?
Yes.
Mayor, we have six yeas.
All right, motion carry, moving right along. Uh, ordinances, first reading?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Um, it, this is a, this is counsel to offer a first reading text amendment to the city zone, to the city zoning ordinance pertaining to provisions for emergency, emergency shelters per the recommendation of the planning commission for a list of affected ordinance sections, please see the background information.
All right, if I?
Part of reading, so there doesn't need to be any motion, Mayor.
All right, thank you, but just for purposes of, uh, discussion, if I could have Ms. Heinz, please, if you could explain to the general body what this is? Caitlin, are you there? Uh, look like I lost. Oh, there you go, all right.
Yeah, no, it, it would, it wouldn't let me unmute. Um, the proposed zoning text amendments are being initiated um, because we've had interest in, um, an emergency shelter in the city. We had a definition, but we did not have, um, any um, areas where it would be zoned, um, permitted zoning or special land use zoning. So we're, um, changing the zoning ordinance to add it as a special land use in the RM and RM1 with, um, the following special land use standards. The facility must be operated by recognized human service agency incorporated, but incorporated by the state and which is not for profit. Uh, resident manager and support services must be provided 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and no such facility may be located within 1,000 feet of a similar facility.
And we wanted to change the 1,000 feet to 3,000 feet. I think the body came to a consensus on, unless someone else from the body wants to say something different. So instead of the 1,000, Caitlin? So instead of the one thousand, Caitlin, it would be three thousand feet. And just for the general public, um, just for the general public, um, just so you can get a sense of reference of what this is that we're talking about. Uh, we were approached by, um, a developer with, uh, Wayne County, um, the, to put in, um, basically, uh, family resource center that's, um, an emergency shelter, um, for, uh, families that's homeless. So it was kind of similar to what we have at, uh, Henry Ralph and Michigan Avenue at the Cape Beard Building, but that building, that actual service is going away for this area and it was going to another community. And the county approached me and asked me if we had any possible land in the city of Inkster, um, to do this project and it's like a five million dollar project. Um, they're building, they're building from the ground up. And, um, you know, we looked at what we had on the books and we already, we had something on the books like, uh, Ms. Heinz said, but we didn't have a defined area where it could go. So this is the first reading for that. Any questions from this body or any other discussion and?
Oh, do the mayor.
Just a comment.
Oh.
Okay, let's go with the ladies first, Councilwoman Wiley.
Just did she, did the other person who's doing this show up so she could answer the questions I had during orientation?
I think they are. Caitlin, are they on the line? And that's, uh, actually not a she, it's he, it's, uh, Ty Hinton, former economic development director for Wayne County and L. Bogdan, former planner for Wayne County. I don't know if they're on the line. Are they on the line, Caitlin? Can you see?
Um.
And if you are on the line, Steve, what do they need to do to, to, to speak? Just, uh?
Star, um, nine to raise your hand.
And this is just the first reading, so it is a second reading that'll follow up from this, so we will be able to get those questions answered and get the applicant here. I know that they said they wasn't attending the meeting, but I know we got a meeting kind of late, so.
That's fine, I was just making sure she didn't forget, she was supposed to get back to me, reference those things. That's all, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead, Councilman Shaw, I believe it was.
Yeah, I'm, I mean, just to comment, uh, you, you talking about building a five million dollar facility from the ground up?
Yes, sir.
You know, that's, that's really commendable, in my opinion, to, to build something like that, you know, from the ground up, it's, it's very rare, you know, that you, you have something like that.
Well, it's actually, um, it's a, it's a, it's a local developer, um, out of the city of V-Course, his name is Pastor Marvin Miles. And, uh, he actually is married to Naomi, legendary Naomi James's daughter. And they're naming the facility the Na- Naomi James Family Service Center if it is successful. Um, so we're just trying to move this, move it forward and do our part.
Yes, sir. Very good, sir, very good.
Okay, City Clerk, uh, do we take any other questions from the public during this time or no?
Um, they had the public hearing at the planning commission, Mr. Mayor.
All right, um, so moving right along, do we need a motion on anything or we just moving right along?
You just move right on.
Mr. Mayor?
Please, go ahead, Councilman Chisholm.
I was just gonna ask if we could state, um, for the record in the general meeting, like we did earlier, what areas are zoned for this? I believe it was the RM one, was that, was that correct?
Caitlin, please.
Uh, she's muted again.
I am keeping myself.
Oh, there you go.
But, um, it's RM and RM one.
RM and RM one, thank you.
RM one, all right, perfect. All right, then, moving right along. New business?
Item A under new business is consideration and approval to authorize administration to appro, approve the contract with Cars Outdoor Service in the amount of fifty-seven thousand two sixty plus a ten thousand dollar contingency for a total of sixty-seven thousand two sixty for crack and joint sealing.
What's your pleasure?
Support.
Move to support discussion?
Yes, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Councilwoman Wiley.
Uh, yeah, in the packet, it shows a list of the streets, but there's no header to show us what the items in the column designate. So what are we looking at?
Mr. Bevins, are you on the line, sir?
Yeah. The headings are, the first one is the road name, the surface type is the next column, current PESA rating is the column after that.
What was the third thing there? What? Cause the first two, you kind of figured out on your own, but the next.
The third one is the PESA rating, from the PESA study we did in two thousand sixteen.
Basically telling you how the streets are, what the damages.
Giving you the, yeah, giving you the, uh, um, points on what the road conditions are. Six and seven, uh, on a scale of one to ten with one being the worst. So these are six and seven, which mean they have some life into them, that's why we're crack sealing them. Uh, the next life, the next row is the lane, how many lanes there are. Most of these are two lanes, we have one that's three lanes. And then the next one says from at two, and then it gives you the approximate length of which we will be crack sealing. And it gives you the number of miles that we will be crack sealing with, in total of each column.
Yeah, it looked like Councilwoman Wiley, in the actual headers, there, there was some, uh, verbiage, but it, it is, it's, the printer didn't pick it up for whatever reason. So we'll definitely get you a good copy of that.
Oh, yeah, cause.
That would be good, and this, and as much as I try, I can't remember what he gave us in two thousand sixteen. Is that something somewhere we can look at?
Yeah, oh, yeah, for sure, just the pay, the PESA study for sure. So Jerome, let's make sure that we email that out to everybody again.
Oh, yeah, cause we, we just did an update last year on it. We have to go back out every three years, so we just, so I'll send them the latest version.
Well, it's, it's, it would be nice to, you know, see it.
Yeah, I'll send it, I'll send you the latest version.
Adorable. Yeah, that would be great, thank you.
Okay.
You're welcome. Any other discussion, uh, questions from anybody? Hearing none, motion please, I mean, uh, uh, roll call please.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yeah.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
And Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Mayor, we have six yays.
All right, motion carries, uh, item B?
Item B is consideration and approval to accept a grant award from Center for Tech for Civic Life for COVID-nineteen response grant in the amount of fifty thousand five forty-six twenty-five for election resources.
Don't move, Mr. Chair.
Any discussion? Hey, City Clerk, if you could just give us, because you, you, you spearheaded, your office spearheaded this grant and got, was awarded the grant, so if you can just give us just a little bit more detail.
Sure. Sure, this was a grant that was offered by, um, that the Michigan Bureau of Elections made us aware of. And this grant will help assist with purchasing new, um, laptops for our electronic poll books, a new tabulator, so that we are able to create another, um, count board. It also will assist with resources, um, in terms of hiring additional staff members, um, and also sanitation costs and the proc- procurement of PPE.
All right, great job. All right, roll call please.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yeah.
Mayor, we have six yays.
All right, motion carries, item C, please.
Item C is to vote in accordance with the vote with close session, Bevins?
Remove.
Support.
Remove it, support it.
I mean, I couldn't catch that. Mayor, I couldn't catch the move and support, I'm sorry.
Rowan Williams?
Okay.
Don't move.
Okay.
Support by Mayor Pro Tim.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry about that. My computer is back this up. Um, Councilmember Wiley?
No.
Councilmember Washington?
No.
Councilmember Chisholm?
No.
Councilmember Williams?
Yeah.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard?
Yes.
And Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Mayor, we have a tie vote tonight?
Yes.
So now we have four yays and three nays, Mayor.
Motion carries, moving right along. All right. All right, this brings us to the meeting, uh, the time of the meeting for public participation. Um, Councilman Chisholm normally takes the lead on it, so if you could, please, Councilman Chisholm, explain how it's gonna go and then we can move forward.
Sure. For those who have called in tonight via telephone for audio, you would press star nine to, uh, raise your hand so you can be recognized. And please, once you're unmuted, to state your name for the record. Also, Mayor, we do have people watching Facebook Live. Um, that's the one, I guess you could say disadvantage, because there is stream in there, but they can't interact with us. So they would either have to, I guess, email their information to the clerk at this particular time, or I don't know what the options is, Madam Clerk?
Yes, the options are, they're, it's on the notice that they have to, um, have the, their comments into me by four PM on today so that I can have a record, you know, of that to be able to read into the record. Um, so, or they would have to participate, um, via call-in. And I do have one, um, person who has asked that something be read into the record, um, for public participation. So whenever you're ready for me.
Let's do that one first, go ahead.
Okay, that's Ms. Octavia Smith, and she has asked, uh, when is the deadline on the amphitheater funding, um, through State Representative Joel, Jewel Jones, when will that be assembled?
Yeah, so it's actually, um, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we received for, um, thank you so much, uh, Jewel Jones for, uh, procuring that for us, a hundred and fifty thousand for amphitheater. The only thing is that it's actually landlocked, so we have to put it in the downtown area, meaning we have to put it, um, in the area of East Road and Michigan Avenue by, uh, the old city hall. And, uh, it's, uh, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And to be frank, um, i- it doesn't really give us enough to get what we're envisioning, something similar to they have down in Wayne and Gotti Park. That's a amphitheater, but that amphitheater cost over a million dollars to do. And, um, so it's a hundred and fifty thousand that we have allotted. Uh, Darren and I, we've been going back and forth talking about it because, uh, it has to be spent by January to twenty, twenty twenty-one. So we're looking at, uh, extending that. And right now, we're looking to, uh, put together RFP for, request for proposal, so we can kind of maybe do like a, a, um, mar, a campus marshes type, open air type of amphitheater or like a band stand type of amphitheater, um, out, outside at, um, the city hall location. So, uh, we're not gonna lose the money. So just so, just so, to answer a question, you know, and I know we shouldn't necessarily be answering right now, but I just wanted to make sure that I put that out to the general public. So we'll be, it will be utilized, we're just trying to figure out the right way to do it. Okay, all right, uh, Steve, I see you got a couple of hands raised, or at least one for sure.
Yeah, and again, and again, for those who've called in, in order to, uh, raise your hand and be recognized to speak right now during public participation, press star nine, and once you're unmuted, please state your name for the record. I know it's sometimes a slight delay, I did, there we go.
Hi, yes, this is, uh, Concerned Citizen Charles Blackwell calling in. Um, I just wanted to say that I'm very touched by Mayor Wimberly's, uh, delinquent tax, properties tax situation of thirteen thousand dollars. And that, you know, I can assist him and find a couple pawn shops if he needs help, uh, raising that thirteen thousand dollars. Thank you.
That caller is on the.
Blackwell strikes again, all right. All right.
Excuse me, Mayor, can I ask a question before you move on? For those people who are streamlining on, um, Facebook, can we, um, say the number out loud so maybe they might wanna call in? I'm not sure if that's something we can do going forward.
Yeah, we could probably actually put the, we should probably put the link in and, and actually make sure that the link is, you know, at the top of the list.
Okay.
So we're, we're, we're definitely working on that, and then next, next week, hopefully between, um, Councilman Chisholm, myself and Troy, we'll, we'll have a Zoom platform that we won't have to, we can still streamline to Facebook, but you should be able to get in on Zoom and see all of us on Zoom, because that's the thing. You know, we wanna, we want folks to actually be able to see our face and see us deliberating.
All right, thank you.
No, you're welcome. So you got another hand there, Steve?
Yes, sir, um, unmuted now.
All right, state your name for the record, please.
Um, Velma Overman.
All right, go ahead.
So we at Operation Refuge are doing, um, Operation Refuge Voter Power Empowerment twenty twenty. We are inviting the Inkster residents to become involved and engaged. We'll be doing several things between now and November fourth. We are currently looking for volunteers for phone banking and, um, making videos, we're gonna have some Zoom bingo. And Connie Mitchell will go into more detail, it's actually a partnership between, um, the Inkster Task Force, uh, Inkster Nonprofits Vote Voice, and we're also covering River Rouge and E-Course. So we'd love for you to join in with us, spread the word, everyone must vote. We are with the ACLU, which means nonpartisan, but, or bipartisan, I should say. We are ready to work and we're looking for partners, so please get ahold of myself or Connie Mitchell in the city of Inkster. We will be sharing information with our city via our council meetings and hopefully we will be able to put PSAs on our city's website. We already have E-Course's mayor and city clerk ready for a town hall. We will be looking to the city of Inkster for our mayor and clerk or council, anyone that wanna share in engaging our citizens to vote, so everybody knows.
Yeah, we definitely, definitely wanna do that, so we're looking forward to the information and you shared it with us and we'll definitely be a part, so.
Thank you, and the volunteering will receive gift cards. So it's not just working for free, so thank you very much.
Thank you so very much. All right, you got another caller, Councilman? All right, please state your name for the.
Oh, that consense, Mandeza?
Good evening.
Yeah, just, yeah, thank you. Um, so just wanted to, I guess, uh, just make it aware to the council that there's an apartment Cherry Hill Manners on Cherry Hill and, uh, Beach Daily. My friend lives there and they're raising the rates during a pandemic. And I know that you can't legislate, uh, ethics and morals, but to me, that doesn't, that, that's, that's, that's not right, you know, and I don't know, I don't know if anything you can do or anything that can be done, but I just wanted to bring that up to the council that, uh, you have an apartment building that's raising the rates and possibly kicking people out. My friend came to report that a hundred dollars, you know, in the middle of a pandemic, so, this, so thank you for sure.
Uh, Mr. Mandeza, what was the name of that apartment complex again?
Cherry, Cherry Hill Manor is on Cherry Hill and Beach Daily.
All right, thank you very much, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
It's, um, hold on, yeah, hold on, I'm trying to find where that caller is, cause it's a lot of background noise or something, okay, it's gone. Um, I was just gonna say, if you're taking note of it or, or, or if Rhonda or whomever is gonna look into it, I think that'd be something that fell under one of those executive orders, I'm not exactly sure, but that'd be a good place to potentially start.
I was really to say that, Stephen, there's an executive order that refers to when, but there's time limits on all of that, so we should go back through our executive orders and, and see.
Yeah, I know that they lifted the eviction one, and I believe that the eviction one went along with, with that as it relates to, um, you know, raising rents and things of that nature, but we'll definitely look at that first and go from there. Okay, Steve, you got anybody else? All right, don't look like.
Doesn't look like it, no.
All right, move right in, City Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and, uh, council and residents, um, the ballots, we have received the ballot and the ballots will be going out this week. Uh, we have received over five thousand applications. So I have three crews that are stuffing ballots and the ballots will be going out this week. I also wanted to let, um, the residents know that as soon. I also wanted to let um, the residents know that as soon as it's approved by the state, they're working diligently on it now. We will have a link on our website um, called Ballot Scout, and you will be able to track your ballot. Um, so you will be able to track that ballot, and you will be able to see where it is in the process, when it was mailed out, when it was sent at the postal service, um, when it came back to, to the city hall. So you will be able to track um, your ballot. And um, I think that is, um, I think that's about it, Mayor.
Mayor?
Yes.
I have a-
Councilwoman Wiley, go ahead.
Yeah, I have a question for the clerk reference voting. Someone called me today and said that if you vote Democratic at the top of your ballot, then go down to the bottom and vote for each Democrat. You're double voting. I don't know what that means, because I don't-
No, that's not the case. The machine will still accept that.
It will still accept it, okay? Cuz I thought that you, they had stopped you from uh, voting all Democratic with one button.
No, you can do that, but, but what will happen is that vote, it will still be counted.
Okay, so they would, that's not voting twice. Okay, thank you.
No.
Right, that's just good information too. We probably just need to put a, 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 you, you gotta, uh, what do you call it? Q and A or F, F and Q?
Yes, I'm gonna be doing some P S A's.
Okay, alright, sounds good then. Alright, City, City Treasurer, Mr.-
Uh, no comments, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
You wanna comment on the, on the hazard pay, or you gonna wait for another day for that?
Um, oh, I, I guess we can. Um, and we'll, we'll be sending out a, a more formal announcement, but um, the city's working um, to provide a one thousand dollar payment to uh, public safety officers in the police department and fire department. Um, this money has been received, or is, we reply for the money from the state of Michigan. Um, I don't know, can everyone still hear me?
He froze. Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, so uh, the money's being provided um, through the CARES Act that was passed at the federal level uh, and was allocated to the state of Michigan. So we're gonna be making those payments this week. Um, and we'll be making a um, a more formal announcement, but uh, those monies will be going to uh, police and fire. Uh, one thousand dollar each um, for hazard pays uh, that's being provided to frontliners for um, related to COVID nineteen.
Alright then. Alright, going right around. Councilwoman Wiley, you wanna start us off?
Me, sir, I have nothing.
Alright, Councilman Chisholm?
Yes, um, the only thing is, I, I don't know how you wanna potentially handle this, right when we were leaving out of of uh, I'm sorry, public participation. We had a caller that popped in from, that called, cuz they were watching on Facebook, but they dialed in. So, I don't know if you still wanna recognize them or not, but I just wanted to give a heads up. Other than that, I don't have anything.
Okay, I'll take a look at it as we're going through. Alright, um, let's see here, Councilman Shaw? Councilman Shaw, you have anything for us, sir? Is he?
Yeah, yeah, I got, I got. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear you, go ahead.
I just got, I just got a quick question on the administration's um, uh, monthly report with the plumbing permits of the city of Inkster, sixty-six total permits, but the fees were waived. Can you, can you let me know what, what, what was going on with that and why we uh, waived some fees?
Sixty-six of them were waived?
Yeah.
Okay, hold on one second. Alright, let's, let's see, let's see if we can actually ask, answer that question. Um, I see Carolyn is on the line. Can we unmute Carolyn Wilson? Carolyn, you're the question. Can you answer that question, or you need to get back with us?
Yes, I did hear the question. Those sixty-six um, permits that was waived was for the contractor that's working on the city line, for the homes that had the rust. I think Jerome knows about that also.
Alright, Mr. Bivens? Can you speak to that, sir, please? I think you're talking about the lead service lines.
Yeah, I, Jerome's not, I don't know if Jerome's available now, but I'm pretty sure that's uh, referring to the uh, lead service lines that the city is, is working to replace.
I'm here, can y'all hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Yeah, that is the number, so that is the number, that's right. So go ahead, Jerome.
Yeah, so, and as council recall from last year, we failed the land and copper test by one house. So we had to meet certain requirements, one was we had to uh, for the next fourteen years, we had to replace seven percent of our lead service line. So that number came out to sixty-seven. So we just finished that Friday, doing the first sixty-seven. And I'm getting ready to update the land and copper report and send it out to everybody. Either by the end of this week or the beginning of next week, cuz it has to be to the state of Michigan by September the thirtieth.
Okay.
Question, sir?
Yes, sir, I, I appreciate it. And I do have another question of, i- it's pertaining to you. Um, the sweepers, this, are, are we running the sweepers in the northeast section, or are, are we gonna do another season or, or whatever?
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm reaching out to them uh, tomorrow to set up for them to come back this week for the fall.
Because I'm looking at streets of Glenwood, Harrison, uh, Parkwood, you know, in the northeast section, but it's, it's a lot of trash that's on that Glenwood street. I mean, I don't know if people are just throwing trash at the end of their, 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 their driveways or what have you, or they just blowing uh, grass and what have you, just out in the street. Uh, you know, the, it, it just really looks tacky uh, from a neighborhood and community standpoint. So I just wanted to know, are we gonna still be running those sweepers?
Yeah, we're gonna sweep the whole city for the fall.
Okay, now also with-
Just two, Councilman Shaw, we do have our sweeper that we're uh, getting maintenance and getting into rotation as we um, you know, have enough personnel to actually run it. So anytime you see something like that, give us a call, give me a call directly and I'll get it right out.
For sure, for sure, cuz it's, i- i- it is, you know, looking very, very tacky in some, on some of these streets. Now, I don't know if the, that sweeper is going to uh, uh, pick up the, 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 the uh, tree limbs or the leaves that's gonna be falling in the fall, so it, it can, can residents push their leaves out to the street, or do they still have to bag them up?
No, that's a no-no, sir. That's against our ordinance. You gotta bag them.
Okay, because I know, I know in some other communities, they're, they're, they're trying to do that. So I wasn't for sure, I just wanna make sure that they are not to put their leaves out in the street.
Those other communities you're speaking of, they have leaf machines. They're streepers. They are using three sweepers, they have leaf machines.
And how much is that machine? How, how much is that, how much is that machine, Mr. Bivens? Cuz I know I wanted you to get one.
Oh, it's a couple hundred thousand dollars, sir.
Exactly, so, yeah.
Right.
So I am familiar with that.
Yeah.
Alright.
And also, and also, um, over there at the police department, now, are we auctioning off those cars? Because I see that the lot is filled with, you know, a, a few, few vehicles over there. So is it, is they having an auction? Or um, it's looking like, almost like a car lot over there now?
Yeah, those are cars that we, that, and I asked the same question, but those cars are being held for evidence. And because the courts are backed up because of COVID, um, you know, it's, we, we gotta keep, you gotta keep the, the evidence until the, the actual judge sees the, sees it. So, um, it's the only lot outside of D P W that we can actually lock. It, it has to be in a locked area. So that's what's happening over there.
Okay, now even also in the D P S yard, are we, are we doing anything with those? Are we selling to residents some of those vehicles o- over there at the D P S yard too?
No, not, not as of yet. We haven't auctioned anything. That has to come through council. So when we came for our budget amendment, we were gonna be presenting something to you about that as well.
Okay.
We're just gonna be working on inventory now, just so we can have a, a inventory of what we can sell.
Okay, okay. Uh, also, on Center, Colonial, Eastwood, Northwood, Magnolia, and Harrison Street, we definitely need some police presence in the, on those streets there, sir. I appreciate it, that's all I have.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. Alright, Councilman Williams?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, one of the things I did discuss with the mayor and I was trying to get with uh, uh, Brother Bivens, I met with the people, some of my residents over in District One. They, that sidewalk that people are making a driveway, a drive-through, speeding through their drive-through. And we come up with a solution, it's really ain't costing that much, and um, but I don't know how, how, how we do it. I talked with the mayor and he said we might can do it, uh, have it done. But, but we wanted to put a gate right there for Edison. I think Edison's the only reason why we have to keep something open in there. So we put a gate on the end for Edison, and then put the uh, cement poles down the sidewalk, and that's enough that they can get their buggies through there when they're walking. The people use to walk to and fro the store. So we was trying to keep it access open, but yet still, we're trying to make it safe, because they're, they're making a speed zone out of it. So I wanna put that on record to try to get something done from that. The mayor's working with me with it, and I hope that, you know, we can get it done.
Yes, sir. Definitely working on that.
And um, just like to thank uh, Brother Bivens and, and his crew for a fine job done doing the uh, the, the floods and various things that we had in the area. That's been one of the real biggest issues in my area. People basement flooding and various things like that. But thank God that we passed the uh, thing to get that, the pump fixed now, and we hope that that'll go away. But, you know, for us, uh, thank, we'll thank all the citizens that who pitched in cleaning up the District One area. If you notice, over in District One, there are a lot of areas that have been cleaned up. So I just wanna thank some of the citizens who's volunteering over in that area. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you so much, Councilman Williams. Councilwoman Washington?
Um, I would just like to request more police presence on Lexington Parkway. Um, had a couple residents to call me about uh, criminal act, criminal activity that's going on, on that Quin Parkway. Um, I also would like to invite everyone out um, to, to Zoom calls that I am having. September the twenty-ninth from six thirty P M. to seven thirty P M., we'll, we'll be talking about self-care during COVID nineteen. Uh, Melissa Stilani uh, will be there as well as Jana Barrico. So I'm teaming up with Beaumont and Western Wayne Health Center, Family Health Center. And then October the sixth also, Stephanie, Stephanie's to seek. Uh, we'll be talking about anxiety, anxiety and coping skills in the pandemic. So I will have uh, the, that information be shared and hope that you guys can be able to join me in, join in on that meeting with me.
Alright, and Mayor Pro Tim Howard?
Yes, thank you. Uh, I'd like to first um, um, offer my condolences to the Supreme Court uh, Judge Ruth Badger, Badger Ginsper. Uh, she tried to hold on, but my prayers goes out to her family. And also another thing, um, on my colleague, uh, Mr. Shaw, Councilman Shaw, when he's talking about the streets, I'm noticing a lot of people throwing trash out the windows. And I've noticed that when I get up in the morning, it's trash in the streets. And it's becoming more and more and more. Uh, so, is there any ordinance that we have on the books that can identify what, if you have trash or something in front of your house, are we responsible for cleaning it up? I'm not sure if we have one on the books or not. Uh, we need to find that out, because I know that we do have street sweepers. But at the same time, when the street sweepers are not there, they just leave it there. So I think the residents should be responsible for keeping the areas in front of their house clean, as well as we having street sweepers. So I don't wanna make a habit of having, uh, having to pay our guys to go out and do an extra sweep, because people are throwing stuff and trash in front of people's homes. I think the homeowners should be responsible for cleaning up in front of their houses.
Yep.
So that's maybe something that we should look at. Also too, the um, the drains that's in the, that's, that's on the sidewalk. I notice driving past is out of leaves and stuff. And that's once again, if you have a storm drain in front of your house, you should be able to keep that clean. Because when it does rain, that's when we have floods in our streets. And then once the flood, once the flood goes down, you can always see the debris sitting in front of the drain, uh, in front of the, in front of homes. So maybe that's something else we need to look at. But I think it's all of our responsibility to keep our city clean. It's just not just D P S. Uh, the residents should be keeping their property in front of their houses clean as well. Uh, that's all I have for tonight.
Alright, well, that leads me into just thanking code enforcement, because they've been doing a wonderful job at uh, identifying those things that you're talking about. You know, we definitely have um, on, on the books as it relates to trash debris being sent out in the front of uh, homes. Um, so we're definitely doing our best to, to, to make sure that we're, you know, from a city standpoint, just, that's the vision. You know, keeping, keeping it clean and, you know, therefore keeping it safe. So um, code enforcement's been doing an excellent job along with uh, Mr. Bivens and uh, his crews going out. But I'm with you one hundred percent. We have to do our part um, as citizens. We just can't keep throwing stuff out and then expecting for the city to get it. So I totally agree with you one hundred percent.
I have one more thing. It's not so much I don't think the residents is doing it, I think it's people that's driving in cars throwing trash out the window.
Oh, I wish we could catch them. I wish we could catch them.
That's what I'm talking about, because-
Outside of people's house, I'm sorry.
Well, no, no, not necessarily that. The trash is, is, I think someone driving down the street throwing it out the window.
Oh, yeah.
But at the same time, some, it's still there. So if, if residents see trash in front of their house, even though we may not put it there, we have a duty to go out there and pick it up.
That's right. I totally agree.
Okay.
I got you. Alright, yeah, okay. Well, we just add on to that. It makes total sense. Um, also too, of course, the census. Um, we only have from, from, for right now, um, it looks like about ten days left uh, for the census. It is um, uh, right now, the, it's a, it, it's um, I, I can't even call it a ruling yet, cuz it hasn't been ruled on, but it's actually going through litigation for looking at possibly another thirty days for the census. Um, right now, the city of Inkster is sitting at about seventy percent, um, which is, you know, up from twenty-ten, but our goal is a hundred percent. Um, so I'm just asking everybody to, just this, this final push, continue to get out, knock on doors, call people. When you see people out, whatever you can do, put it on your Facebook pages, all your social media outlets, that the census counts for all of us. If you can't do anything else for the city, do your census. Alright, with that being said, I see uh, Steve, that caller has raised their hand. I want to, you said, is that, you said that caller was from Facebook?
Yeah, they were watching on Facebook, but of course, like we mentioned earlier, they can't interact with us um, like that way, like they can't on here, like they can't actually speak during the meeting. Alright, when we went into the-
Let's recognize them and give them a moment to talk, please.
Alright, caller, once you're unmuted, um, please state your name for the record.
Hello?
Yes, state your name for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Kimberly Johnson. Hello, Mayor and Council. Um, thank you for taking my call. I'm sorry, I didn't know that we couldn't say anything online. But um, what my question is to you is, I live at the corner of Amherst and Mount Vernon. I don't care if we get a little bit of rain or a lot of rain, this street flood over here is terrible. It's all the way up to our sidewalk now. At first, when I first moved over here eight years ago, it was a little, little, and then it kept getting more and more coming up towards the sidewalk. Now it is at the sidewalk. And it takes almost a hu- entire day for the water to go down. I have posted pictures on Facebook and on the city links, and I also have put it on C Click Fix. This has been going on for years now, and I'm trying to avert a problem before it gets to our home. Is there anything that can be done about this? Because it's terrible, the, you cannot even get to your cars. If you park your car on the street and it rain at night, you can't get to your car. And it's terrible.
Oh, boy. Yeah, I, I definitely know about the issue, and we are doing our best to resolve the issue as quickly as possible. We know that it's an infrastructure problem, just like the, for the most part, the entire city of Inkster, we're dealing with fifty-year-old infrastructure. But at the same time, we're definitely, um, I'm gonna work with uh, uh, Mr. Bivens, that's on the call- But at the same time, we're definitely, I'm, I'm gonna work with uh uh Mr. Bivens that's on the call with me right now. I do have your number listed here, and I'll be following up with you tomorrow directly, and we'll come by and we'll.
I appreciate that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that, and thank you for listening to my comment. I appreciate you.
Yes, ma'am, no problem.
Okay, bye.
All right, if there's nothing else, motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
It's been properly moved and supported. Uh, I don't think we need to roll. All the favors say aye.
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 Right, you all have a wonderful evening. Thank you all so much.
You too. Bye-bye.
Good week.